I'd call to order meeting of the May 6, 2020 Frederick County Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome the people here tonight. Before we do a moment of silence, I would like to everybody keeping their thoughts our country under the current conditions of the coronavirus and COVID-19. But at this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. The first item tonight is the adoption of our agenda. To have any changes or modification to the agenda, if there is none, I'll entertain a motion to for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item, since we have not met, and as you see by the agenda, we have numerous minutes to approve. We've got the October 2, 2019, October 16, 2019, November 6, 2019, December 4, 2019, December 18, 2019, and January 15, 2020. There's no changes to the minutes as they presented. Have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes as I listed? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is committee reports. And the first one I have is our new commis- our new committee chair, Mr. Ambrogi, DRC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess last week was February 27th. And took up the following items. First of all, we elected a chairman, myself, vice chairman Gary Oates. Next, we discuss the zoning ordinance text amendments and the items that were directed to us by the Board of Supervisors. Then we re- we reviewed per foot the proposed changes to the development review fees for conditional humor use permits, specifically the telecommunication communication facilities. And this item will come up before the Planning Commission tonight. Lastly, the county attorney made a presentation to us about the existing enforcement of zoning ordinance penalties. How you remedy that? It's clearly set out in your agenda tonight. And then we're done, that was it.
Alrighty, thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
There's no report from Frederick Water. There is, good, got a report from Frederick, Mr. Oates.
Yes, Frederick Water met on April 21st. We adopted the 2021 budget. It was also announced that the water lines are in place for the Orchard View Elementary School. And our plant in Stevens City can receive water from the wells on site and send treated water back to the school. The Route 37 water loop is now complete. And our two Frederick Water plants are available or can now provide water to all of our customers. We still are required to purchase a minimum of 625,000 gallons a day of finished water from Winchester. However, that contract will expire in 2022. The new water plant in Stevenson is currently in the bid process. Those bids are due next week and construction will begin in early summer. The rainfall for February was 2.44 inches and March was 2.21 inches. And our Clearbrook and Stevens City quarries are staying full.
I don't think we have one from transportation. They have not met conservation easement, Mr. Triplet. No report? No meeting? Keep going down the list. I don't think Mr. Moan has one for CPPC. Historical resources, none. And there's no representative Winchester Planning Commissioner tonight. So it brings us to our Board of Super Liaison. Supervisor Greber.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just like to bring to light two things that you have before you tonight under tabs D and E. And I just wanted to provide a little bit of background in what several supervisors have voiced for you to consider this evening. Tab D is on CUPs and the costs affiliated with that with the towers. What have, what has been presented to me by several supervisors is twofold. One, as you set the the fee, whatever that fee you believe to be most appropriate, there is some desire to understand how you arrived at that figure, whether that be 750, 1500, whatever that number is, just so there is some form of understanding as to why the fee was set where it is in regards to having consideration for those in our community who have voiced concerns about not having money to pursue a CUP for private use for internet towers at their residence. Also, if you will look at tab E in your packet this evening, under zoning enforcement violations and penalties, some of the comments that have been brought forth by several board members were it has appeared in the past that when there is a zoning violation, that some of the businesses have felt like it was just a cost of doing business, they would just pay the fee and go on and maybe have had, made it difficult to bring them into compliance. And so at the February meeting, first February meeting, there was a considerable discussion by the board and the board voted obviously to bring it to you this evening to increase those fees, to make it a little more impactful. So folks may not think, well, just blow this fee off and just go on. So both items are before you tonight. Just wanted to put some perspective to you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Is that your report then for the last Board Supervisor meeting?
It is. The last board meeting was for budgeting purposes, for the most part. This this board or the Planning Commission had not met since February, the the allowance to consider those things.
Thank you. Our next item is the citizen comments. And since we're very limited on our citizens tonight, I don't believe we'll have citizen comments, but I'll open the floor to that. And since I don't see anyone coming forward, we'll close the citizen comments. Our first item is a public hearing item. It's conditional use permit number 01-20 for JK Lee Services. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This property is located at 549 Valley Mill Road. It's in Red Bud Magisterio District. It's current land uses as assisted living facility. It's a zoned RP and the proposed uses expansion of that facility. This is an application for an expansion of the facility. The adult care facility is allowed within our RP zoning district with approved conditional use permit. This facility first was approved in 1996 for a continued care facility through a CUP and it was built with a community block grant. Facility currently is operating under subject to conditions of a conditional use permit. It was approved in 2004. And that conditional use permit allowed for 5600 square foot addition to the facility. The addition was for a new physical therapy room and eight additional residential rooms to the facility for a total of 34 beds. This new application before you tonight is a proposed to add six more additional residential rooms within the existing structure to allow the facility to expand to a total of 40 beds. As you're well aware of, most of our conditional use permits have, if you're going to do any expansion, has come before this body and obviously the Board of Supervisors for final approval. This is the, I think we should have, y'all should be more familiar with this. So again, up on Valley Mill Road, it's the care facility up there, zoned RP. This is the original site plan and updated site plan, the original site plan was updated when we've done the addition back in 2004. I mean, put it really simple. They got unfinished unfinished basement ground floor and they just want to add some rooms in there. They had to come back in front of the this body and the Board Supervisor for approval. Should the Planning Commission find this use to be appropriate, staff will recommend the following conditions. Number one, our review agency comments, so we can comply with at all times. Number two, the applicant must comply with all requirements of state and county codes pertaining to adult care facilities at all times. And number three, any expansion or modification of this use should require a new site plan and a conditional use permit. Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer your questions you or any of the planning commissioners may have. There is, the applicant is also here if there should be any questions. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Chair? I see none. Thank you, sir. Would the applicant like to come or speak to us?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has no comments at this time unless you have any questions of the applicant.
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Thank you. Thank, thank the person. Thank you. At this time, I'll open a public hearing. This is a public hearing item. Anyone would like to come forward to speak for or against this item? Please come forward at this time. And seeing that there's no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I could also add that, of course, nobody came for the public hearing this evening. And because of the current situation, we provided additional opportunity through a public web forum for public comment and we received none prior to today's meeting.
Thank you, sir. So, any questions? Discussions, anything from my PC members? Good? I think it's been a good, good, good business and I think we've supported the county well. Who's district command here? Red Bud.
It's Red Bud.
If there's no questions and no discussion, I'll entertain a motion from Red Bud.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend approval of conditional use permit number 01-20.
Second.
Second.
I got a second. So I'll start voting. This is going to be different. Let me start with Mr. Marston down here.
Marston, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Oates, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Yes.
Moan, yes.
Oh, Mr. Dawson.
Dawson, yes.
Morrison, yes.
Klein, yes.
Okay.
Ambrogi, yes.
And chair votes, yes.
Joel, yes.
Did I miss anyone? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Joel. I knew I would leave somebody. Mr. Joel.
Yes.
I'm sorry, sir. Forgive me. And the chair votes, yes. So the motion carries. And this will go to the Board of Supervisors with the May 27th. Yes, May 27, 2020 meeting. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, I've got this, is an information discussion item number 02-20 for Heritage Commons. Mr. Klein.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is information discussion item for you all to consider this evening for the Heritage Commons development. And this is a proposal to develop 141 plus or minus acres of land zoned R4 residential planning community property for a mixed use community in the Shawnee District. The properties subject to this master development plan or MDP are part of rezoning application 1015, known as Heritage Commons, previously known as the Russell 150 site. And these were approved December 9, 2015 with proffers. I can direct your attention to the screen. The subject properties are outlined in blue and they are highlighted in orange, which is the R4 zoning district. The western property boundary is contained by I-81 and the eastern property boundary is contained by Front Royal Pike. The property is bisected by Future Crossover Boulevard, which is county revenue sharing project that's currently under construction, which includes a connection to the city of Winchester. Sure you're all very familiar with this project. The master development plan for Heritage Commons includes up to 100, up to 645 multifamily residential housing units, a minimum of 107,500 square feet of commercial development, including uses in the B1, B2, and B3 zoning district. Right-of-way dedication for Future Warrior Drive Extended, which is a north-south connection through this property, which I'll highlight in the next slide. Preservation of the sensitive environmental features on site, specifically Buffalo Lick Run, which bisects the site as well. And that's going to be an area preserved for recreational purposes. And there's future interparcial connectivity with adjacent existing residential uses, including Madison Village and several other subdivisions in the vicinity of the site. Again, directing your attention to the screen for orientation, Interstate 81 is here and Front Royal Pike is here on your screen. Crossover Boulevard is the Serpentine roadway with a roundabout that bisects Heritage Commons. Shown in the master development plan with the dotted line is the future 92 feet of right-of-way for Warrior Drive, which is an improved major collector roadway running north-south through the site. In blue is the preservation of the sensitive environmental feature Buffalo Lick Run here. And then you have your various land bays that comprise your residential and commercial land uses. The master development plan for Heritage Common appears to be consistent with the approved rezoning application 1015, specifically the proffer statement, and with the requirements of Article 8 of the zoning ordinance, which is our master development plans requirements. And this MVP is in a form that is administratively approvable. Again, this MDP is presented to the Planning Commission this evening for information and discussion. No action is required by the Planning Commission, but staff will certainly convey any comments that are made on the application to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any discussion? Any questions? Anyone?
I have any concern.
Okay. Anyone? Thank you. Seeing no one, keep moving. Next item on our agenda is a review for fees for the commercial telecommunications facilities. That's also Mr. Klein.
So this is a, again, an ordinance amendment for information and discussion purposes this evening on development review fees. This is a proposed amendment to Chapter 165, the zoning ordinance, and to the development review fee schedule to reduce the fee for a conditional use permit for a commercial telecommunications facility. The purpose of the reduction in this fees is to encourage commercial telecommunications facilities to locate in underserved areas of the county, specifically those areas that are rural and located primarily west of Interstate 81. In December 2019, you all will recall, the Board of Supervisors adopted the two-track process for the review and approval of telecommunications facilities. That created a by right allowance for towers up to 50 feet in height that would be approved administratively by staff and a standard process projects process for towers 51 feet or greater in height. And those would be continued to require a conditional use permit. And those would be subject to a public hearing by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. Conditional use permit fees for these types of uses were identified as a potential barrier to local service, local service providers and applying for telecommunications facility permits. The Board of Supervisors further directed staff to reevaluate the fee schedule with the intention of reducing the fee. And that was to be considered separately from the two-track process amendment, which is where we are today. The Development Review and Regulations Committee discussed this item at their February 27th meeting. At the time, they were given a proposal for towers 51 feet and greater in height, or those fees subject to the standard process requiring a conditional use permit of $750. The $750 fee is consistent with the conditional use permit fee for all other uses listed in the zoning ordinance. And it is primarily designed to cover the cost of advertising in the local paper and to sending the adjoining property owner notifications. The DRC and their discussions regarding the fees recommended a tiered fee schedule, specifically that for towers for 51 feet to 100 feet in height, the fee would be $1,500. And for towers 101 feet in height and greater, the standard $7,000 fee that is currently in place would continue to apply to those towers. At their March 25, 2020 meeting, the Board of Supervisors adopted a temporary code amendment that would, that's running through May 24, 2020. And that changed the conditional use permit fee for telecommunications facilities. Again, that current fee was $7,000 and the temporary code amendment reduced the fee for all standard process projects to $750. We're currently operating under that $750 fee and we have received several applications for a conditional use permit. This ordinance amendment is presented to the Planning Commission this evening for information and discussion. And comments from the Planning Commission will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors. Ultimately, if the Board of Supervisors deems this to be an appropriate amendment, it may come back to this body for a public hearing at a later date. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any questions? Mr. Thomas.
Have we been able to track typically what it's cost us to do a communications tower, CUP, and in categories, 100 feet and less and, you know, the larger ones? Do we, do we have any idea? Have we captured any typical costs for staff to process those applications?
We're not tracking those costs. Again, the costs that we are tracking relate to the advertising and the adjoining property notifications. As I understand it, when that $7,000 fee was adopted, it was designed to cover legal and our other third-party consultant fees for the evaluation of those facilities. But typically, a lot of the work that would have been done by a third party at the time is now done by the applicants. That's your balloon test and verify your propagation studies and things like that. So that's where that fee, that fee came from. But in regards to your question, no, the only fees that we track in regards to our time on these conditional use permit applications is the advertising and the public meeting notifications that go out to the adjoining properties.
Since we changed the height requirement, could you break down how many applications we typically get that are from individual users and what are the big commercial users? Is it 90% commercial, 10% individual? Is it 50/50?
I can't speak specifically to those numbers because the ordinance amendment just, just took effect in January. Mr. Chair may be able to give a better evaluation. He's been reviewing the administrative applications that we've received and I do believe we have several conditional use permits for private or commercial telecommu- commercial telecommunications facilities for private owners that have come through recently. Mark, do you want to jump in?
Could you define that for what you just said?
So it's a commercial telecommunications facility provided by a local service provider, but it's on a private individual's property, like a homeowner, like a homeowner and so the road communities.
So they were doing a land lease of some sort, I guess, with the private homeowner and they're building a commercial tower on a private property with a land lease.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Like cell tower.
Just like a cell tower.
Essentially, it is, it is a cell tower, but it's servicing one individual household as opposed to.
Service in one household?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Currently, since we've, we put the, as Mr. Klein was pointing out, the, drop the fee for now is going, we've got three applications currently that were applied for conditional use permit because there are higher tires than the 50, towers than the 50 that, that the state code required us to change. We've got, we actually have one that was administratively approved. That applicant has since come back and he's a, a greater height, as Mr. Klein pointed out. So that was the first one, Mr. Thomas, that came was administratively reviewed. They have since come back in for a conditional use permit. There are four conditional use permits out there right now. What, when the state code changes, as Mr. Klein pointed out, was if you were at 50 foot, what we were having, the issues, not to belay the issue here for the night, was we had some legal towers that had been put up. And we're working through that right now. And we have four, like I said, conditional use permits comes to clean that up. But that's where you're at.
What heights are they?
They're actually 100 feet or more, a couple of them.
So we're having private towers built that are over 100 feet?
They're, it's a commercial, it's technically a commercial tower for what the use is there. So in other words, I would come to your residence and let's say you built a tower to get internet service and that tower has been used only for, not only for you, but it could be for the co-locate, you put other arrays on there to serve a bigger, bigger audit. I mean, if you were only cut it down to make it short and simple, as Mr. Clown's point out, basically the same thing, whether you have 199 foot one that you either approve or not, or a small 100 one, once you co-locate, put things on that, it, it, it is what it is, a telecommunications tower. And the small cell just was passed to serve these areas, as he pointed out, that the, that the Commonwealth of Virginia had us approve for 50 foot. We set the fee up as, as again, he pointed out, that's reviewed just staff time, doesn't come in front of you. We look at it, they pull a building permit, pay the $100 and they're on their way.
Once a tower gets built, a commercial sized tower on a private piece of property that supposedly is for a single use, for a single person use, they have, we have no recourse if they say, I need to offset these costs that I've got involved, I've got up to this point, and I start bringing other users on, they're perfectly within the code and ordinances to do that.
If they've come in and have asked and got the 100, you know, if staff was looking at the, because you got two, like I said, a two-track step here. Yes, because we, we want you to co-locate as you all have passed conditional use permits for telecommunications tires, and one of their requirements is that. The small cell that pointed out that was changed, it was in front of here to 50 foot. If you pulled in today, applied for it, it's administratively reviewed, pulled a building permit, meets all of zoning ordinance requirements. We just sign the permit and it goes forward, they, they pay the fee. Now, if someone wants co-locate on that, they co-locate on it. And a lot of these are smaller, just, just so we understand, I think Mr. Klein really spelt that out as you were at the DRS. A lot of these are smaller companies, not like the, the ATTs that you normally see or Singler that you normally see, the last 165 foot tire that was, wasn't approved, you know, it's a pretty big tire. We have 100, we have another one that just came in for 199. So it's the same, same business.
Tom, should you have another question?
I guess not.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes. And reading the agenda, I see, is it everyone's opinion that with the DRC, that the 750 figure was insufficient?
At that meeting, we had two people that expressed concern about raising the fee to the 1,500 and 7,000. And that's, but again, we don't, that committee doesn't take like a roll call vote, it's just kind of like, is there a consensus among the committee? We had a lengthy discussion about that fee being $1,500. They set that fee, you know, acknowledging that the towers probably between 51 feet and 100 feet are going to be for individual property owners. But there is still staff time devoted to reviewing and processing those applications and that the towers above 100 feet, those are going to be your commercial entities, your ATTs, your Verizons, your Chantels, and that that fee should remain unchanged. Getting back to Mr. Thomas's question, again, we just don't have the volume of applications at this point to evaluate maybe where we are at with the breakdown of administrative versus 50 to 100 feet, 100 feet and greater at this point.
Tom? And I guess my thought there while I was asking the question, it appears to me that we would like to have a tiered fee for individual private ownership of the towers, but we do encourage co-location. But when we start getting taller towers, even if it's 80 or 90 feet, the probability of co-location on a 90-foot tower is much higher than co-location on a 50-foot tower unless the geography is totally different there. But wouldn't we be better off doing a tiered approach that say from 70 foot or 75 foot and below, maybe go with a 750 fee or the 1,500 fee? From 75 feet to 120 feet, maybe make it $2,500 because those are going to be more of a, a profit-making enterprise for the individuals. And you're going to have more companies like Winchester Wireless and that that are trying to get in there to build 120-foot towers or 100-foot towers and put multiple antennas on it. And then the big commercial towers that take up space and take a lot of time to evaluate, maybe make them $5,000. Anything over 125 feet, make it 5,000 or $7,000. Wouldn't we be better off covering our, wouldn't that more closely cover our costs, our anticipated costs than having the two-tiered approach that we kind of have that gap in there? I think the 75 to 100, 125 foot towers that still may be for smaller areas, I'm not saying they're private areas, but they might be for a five-acre development that has 20 houses in it that need internet. And a $7,000 cost to them is much more significant than a $2,500 cost would be, but we'd still be able to cover the county's costs more closely than having the two-tiered system.
That's certainly a comment that can be relayed to the Board of Supervisor. I think the committee, the DRC discussed that tier and they were trying to, you know, keep it as straightforward as possible, not getting, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a professional engineer. It comes to telecommunications, neither are the people in the committee. We were trying to evaluate, you know, what, what is deemed appropriate given cost and what, what we can anticipate from a number of applications coming in. So it's certainly a valid point.
Stroats?
Yeah, Roger, the committee, we, we kind of, we're thinking along what you were just saying, only we were looking at 50 to 100 and then on up. And thinking that the 50, since it's by right now, and not by right, but administrative, that takes care of a lot of your private users. Then if you go from 50 to 100, since that's going to be a CUP and they have to come in, the experience in the past, we've seen that these towers bring the neighbors out and a lot of times. out and a lot of times they get postponed and we end up having tablings and that's why the seven fifty was considered not enough because we're going to have to pay for double the, the advertising and whatnot, so it was more appropriate for fifteen hundred. And if you went over a hundred, well, then you're definitely into the realm of commercial and we didn't see any need to lower that fee since we may have to have legal involved or studies. We needed, we needed that buffer just as we always have. So we use the hundred foot as kind of the cutoff between private and commercial.
History is any guide, our last couple cell tower meetings have been two or three meetings and a lot of.
Yeah, and the cost of, to the county, the advertising and everything is certainly more than a standard CUP.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Joel.
So this issue, it comes back to personal use versus commercial use, whether it's a small company or it's an individual. The argument's been take it down to seven fifty for individuals. I think it's got to be written accordingly because we've had small businesses, like when it was mentioned tonight, that's abused this and they're continuing to abuse this and they're going to continue to abuse this, especially if you're dropping the CUP price. And it, I think it's got to be the tiered idea, especially for the individuals, that was the argument and that's been the concern all along. We've, we've been in many of these meetings, both in the Planning Commission and with the supervisors, and the argument's been that folks can't get internet, they want to have the right to put a tower up. That's good if it's for the individual, but when it becomes a commercial, that's when it's been a real problem, especially when the commercial is not, company is not abiding the rules and regulations and just ignoring us, ignoring the rights. So I, I think that the fifteen hundred gives you an idea, but I really would love to hear how many are actual individuals that only want it for them versus a company that's coming in, buying a house, renting the house out and putting a tower up and then all of a sudden, you've got a commercial tower there. I think it's a real problem that's got to be addressed and it's got to be addressed so it's tight while we have the opportunity to write these rules.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Joel. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Mr. Morrison.
I think we're using the height of the tower wrongly in this case because especially in the western part of the county where people are in a mountainous area. I know I'm not intending to put up a tower, but I live along the side of a creek, I'm in a hole and a hundred-foot tower wouldn't do me any good, no matter how I intended to use it and there's only three neighbors, so it's not going to be a commercial enterprise. I know there's a lot of people in a similar situation, so if we only regulate according to the height of the tower, we will be unjust to some people and yet allow some other people to get away with it. And I think we need a balance of those two things as well.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? All good discussion. You have what you need, Mr. Klein?
Sir, we do. Thank you.
I think it's going to be ongoing for a little while, so thank you. Next item is also an information discussion item. It's zoning enforcement violations and penalties. Mr. Klein.
Yes, good evening again. This is another ordinance amendment for information discussion purposes regarding zoning enforcement violation and penalties. Specifically, this is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance to enact stricter penalties for zoning violations. Presently, the county enforces zoning ordinance violations through the misdemeanor process, but the state also permits the use of civil penalties. If the county adopted civil penalties for specific violations, state law would require the county to pursue civil penalties for those violations up to an accumulated fine limit of five thousand dollars before pursuing the misdemeanor process for those violations. The Development Regulations Review and Regulations Committee discussed this item on February the twenty-seventh as well and the DRC, after consultation with the county attorney, generally supported increasing the fees under the current misdemeanor process rather than enacting a civil penalty process and the item was sent forward to the Planning Commission for discussion. So again, the DRC supported the county attorney's recommendation to, to increase the fees for misdemeanors as opposed to enacting civil penalties. Again, this ordinance amendment is presented this evening for information and discussion and comments from the Planning Commission's discussion will be presented to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Anyone like to discuss enforcement of zoning violations and penalties? A hot topic for Mr. Williams, who I think we had good guidance and good, good insight from Mr. Williams. I think that, I think everyone is in agreement coming off the DRC that this is the right way to go, so if there's no one had any further discussion, I think that, Mr. Thomas?
I think we, I agree with you and I think we ought to go with whichever is the highest cost penalty and the easiest for the, for the county to collect.
All right. One else? Thank you, Mr. Klein. We've come down to that famous part of our meetings called other. I think I can make safely say we have no meeting scheduled for May twentieth. Is that, that is correct? So we.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. We will be having a meeting on June the third. Obviously during the current condition, we want to make sure that we're minimizing the meetings as much as possible, but you do have items to deal with and therefore we will be meeting on June the third and likely after that, too.
And until further notice, this will be our setup until someone tells us otherwise. I appreciate everyone's cooperation tonight. It's a little different that I get to look at people, my own commissioners out here, so I'm sorry again, Mr. Joel, for missing you early on, but I'll make that up down the road to you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? We're adjourned.